Okay. It is seven o'clock or a little after on Tuesday, the twenty seventh. Call the meeting to order. Item on the agenda. This evening, we have Amy Creek, myself, Russ Edwards, Joe Barco, and our assistant Melissa as well. So we're in good shape. And we're going to review the minutes from the past. We're also going to do a little review on how we want them formatted. Things look pretty good. I think under correspondence, all we kind of need is to highlight ones that we're going to take specific action on. Most of them are simply notices of either upcoming training sessions, announcements from DOT or from EPS, et cetera. And we simply file those once we have anyways. The email from Kevin Kreen is spelling as C E. V I N Kevin with a C.
Kevin with a C or Kreen?
No, Kreen with a C, pardon me. Yeah. I was gonna say Kevin with a C, that's what we do. And communication with Cheyenne Perry. I finally got her mailing address, so I can take care of that now. That just came in the other day. Town properties, that's working. New business. Looking pretty good. Did you see anything needed to be corrected? I entertain a motion to approve as correct. Say a favor? Aye. Great, that takes care of that. Format, I think Melissa and I can start working on that a little bit more offline instead of spending the time here. We have about three or four different formats that have been used in the past short period of time, so we'll kind of clean it up, make it a little bit more uniform over there. As far as agenda item, first thing I want to discuss was beginning of budget season. So for the next meeting, which will be first one in October, I'll see if I can copy these and what we've spent so far as far as the listing that Angela provided. And we can start looking at how we're going to have to approve or increase the budget. There's been generally increases across the board with costs of fuel and everything else. So let's going to take up some time. Correspondence, I have quite a pile this time. It seems that this is a time, a lot of trainings and stuff are happening. One of the first things I'll highlight is something to add to do this. This is from Diane Johnson. It was an email to the select board. As my husband and I went to vote today, we noticed the railing that the place at the entrance of Town Hall needs to be replaced. It has been like that for some time. Also, I've been to Croydon resident for twenty-six years and just noticed as I walked by the parking lot, there is a huge rock, a plaque on it, which is about the town of Croydon, which cannot be seen because it's covered by two big bushes of trees that could be cut back. So townspeople can do it. And that oak tree that started the road is encroaching on the walkway. So do you think Carl?
Yeah, he cut it about two years ago. He whacked all the stuff down, so I'm sure he'll do it again.
If you get in touch with him to work on that again, because we don't want having to, you know, walk out on the grass or even slip on stuff because of that. The Plan Link email that comes out from the county is highlighting the fact that there is a deadline for community housing navigator grants. I don't know if the planning and zoning boards are aware of these coming out.
I don't know. I will let Russell know. Yeah, Russell.
The Housing Opportunity Planning Grants, HOP grants, are for municipalities to hire consultants to work on one or more of the three phases of regulatory changes outlined below. Need, needs analysis and planning grants, regulatory audit grants, regulatory development grants. I don't know if we need that.
No, because we're not doing the whole deal because the whole thing would be, I mean, we're talking twenty-seven thousand dollars to do the entire master plan.
Yep, because they're
get the chapters we need.
So at this point, it is available. You wanted to bring that to the board, just make them aware. A couple of people approached me asking whether we were having any effect on the broadband because they've seen different cable companies working on poles and stuff. So I contacted Mary Ellen Player, who is the person that came from Consolidated to talk to us back about a month and a half, two months ago. Thanks so much for reaching out. This unfortunately is not our fiber, but we expect to hear back from the state on our grant application next week. This was as of the fourteenth, so anytime now we should hear something. We think our proposal was super compelling as the proposed project covered twenty-five less than the full amount. We're very hopeful in those statistics. That said, the state also recently announced a second also be keen to submit an application to. So they'll keep in contact with us, but no news.
So this is not our fire.
Yeah, so this is, I'm not sure whose it is, but it's not Consolidated working on that program. Announcement from Primex HR for the HR professional. I didn't know if it was you or you would be interested in attending that. I can forward you an email as well. This would be on October fifth, which is next week, nine to three. So that may be difficult at this point. But I'll forward email. New Hampshire Office of Planning Development Plan webinar. Amendment time. So another group's putting out some stuff. The next webinar in the New Hampshire Office of Planning and Development, planning lunches at noon, monthly webinar series is it's zoning amendment time again on Thursday, October twentieth. So this is a few weeks down the road from twelve to one P M. I'll forward the emails to both of you.
Yeah, I'll make sure Phil sees them too.
It looks like everybody's in the training session right now. Drummond and Woodsum, Principals of Employment Seminar, Tuesday, October fourth, from nine A M. to four. I'm not sure we really need this one as much because we only got a total of four employees, so or five employees, something that's pretty. If we need stuff, we typically contact Hampshire Municipal and if we need our lawyer. I can send them to you just so you see what is coming down the line. Here's one that may be more interesting, a number of people, EverSource. In response to record high energy bills for New Hampshire residents, EverSource and the New Hampshire Department of Energy are cosponsoring a webinar on four October two, twenty-twenty-two from twelve to one P M. for municipal officials and community partners that focus on how utilities procure energy, the drivers behind recent supply rate increase, energy options available, payment programs, financial assistance, and energy efficiency options available for customers. It's October fourth. I don't think I've got anything scheduled for that timeframe. So I think I'm going to sign up for that webinar and I'll send both of you the invite as well. Another one from Primex Press Conference one thousand or one hundred and one, Thursday, October twenty-seventh. This is to give you kind of a education on how to hold a press conference if it so desires. Well, I'll forward this one to both of you as well. See if there's any interest. Fuel Assistant Program. Good afternoon, behalf of Senator Ward attached, please find a brief summary of the eligibility requirement for the New Hampshire Fuel and Electrical Cost Assistance Program that the New Hampshire Senate and House passed and was signed by the governor. State of New Hampshire has recently adopted legislation to provide energy, emergency energy assistance to qualifying households. The state of New Hampshire will provide this assistance through the local community action agencies. Then it covers who's eligible, how to apply and so forth. So I think this should probably be posted over here. Yeah, and probably a copy over in the Connaissance store and I'll forward this to both of you as well. We may have people that'll need that this year.
I think a lot of people will.
Here's something I don't think has much impact on us, the long-term implication of short-term rentals. This is Thursday, September twenty-ninth, so it's coming up right away. And it's an expensive one. It's put on by the New Hampshire Municipal Association and it's a hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And I don't think we've got that many short-term rentals in So there's that. Comcast, where my Mr. Red last time. Here's an update of what N R R A is taking care of for us from the transfer station. Just a quick note from the New Hampshire DOT Fuel Distribution customers. This is for like Town Highway Department, so I'll forward this to Joe so he can understand what's going on. They're changing some of their monthly renewing periods and stuff. This, I'm not sure where it came from. It's from the New Hampshire Association of Assessing Officials. It's the twenty-twenty-three action ballot. Are you familiar with this is?
No.
Sounds like the town's expected to vote for some of these people at a state level. Because there's the different counties, I think, are separately listed on the back. Does Sue know anything about that?
I will find, that's what I was gonna say. I'll find out, take it to her because she has the big book.
Okay. I got an additional email from Kevin Kreen today. He has spoken with his lawyer and believe that the deed prohibiting subdivision is that rigid. So he'd like to work with the town of both us and Sonnapi. That's gonna have to be the planning department.
That has to be the planning work. We have nothing to do with the actual stuff.
You want me to give it to you to get to them?
Yeah, I mean, I can give it to, we can put it in the envelope and stuff. You know, Kreen know that he
I don't have the other one printed out. I'll forward this stuff to you because this is two different, two, two separate emails. Then we'll have the information.
Okay.
And I'll take care of that. Upper Valley Lake Sonnapi Regional Planning Commission, they're taking orders for the Planning and Land Use Regulation Handbooks. Do you know if we need any at this point? Are you the newest ones?
I think we got one last year is the newest one we got.
In the past years, group purchase enables us to arrange for your purchase at a substantial discount of retail price. The cost will be nine dollars per book or ebook for fourteen. I don't know why the ebook should be more.
Yeah.
Or maybe that's
I'll give, I'll give it to Phil, but I doubt we're gonna go through it.
Okay, great. But the deadline's coming right up.
I'll, I'll, I'll see him. I'll make sure and see him tomorrow.
Okay, that was most of the community. Under old business, we had the request from the homeschoolers. And one of the things that I was investigating was contacting Primex to find out if there was any impact to our insurance. In a nutshell, no, but they gave us some policies and procedures to have signed by people using the facility. And at this point, I got an email from Aaron saying that they are withdrawing their application. So it's kind of a moot point, but I think having a policy and a signup procedure and so forth in place is something we should work on in the future. So I'm gonna keep
Yeah, because I mean, it's like it
This could be anybody.
The homeschoolers, it's like the people in the church, you know, any, anyone like that, any of those groups.
So we can look over the samples and work on that. I gave Melissa the report from the chair so she can include it with the minutes. And then did you want to highlight anything from, anything from the thirty turnpike or anything? Or do we want to work on that in public?
Probably do a non on that because of, you know.
Because it's attorney-client privilege.
Right, right.
Let's see if we can get some other things cleaned up first. Charlene's been nice enough to give us the budget numbers. So if you'd look over these
Yeah.
And I will also send both of you the listing that Angela sent me. It's, it's like thirty pages long. It covers all the different accounts and everything. And that way we can pull out exactly what's paid for in all the different categories to make an understanding of exactly how these numbers are coming up. Some additional stuff is. Yeah. Okay, did I spell it wrong? Okay, we got the MS five thirty-five back from the auditors. I took the time to go onto the portal and press the button to get it out of graph mode. I've signed it, Amy signed it, so now you can sign it. Then I'll scan it and upload it to the D R A portal tomorrow and then we'll get that out of the way. And Charlene had checked whether we had switched to handover dispatch. The answer is yes, so this is the bill that I'll put in the bill folder for her to take care of, dealing with vouchers. Current use documentation. This is from Eleanor L. Redman. Enclosed, please find the site map detailing the two acres out of current use for our property in Croydon. We measured and the road point two, three mile and measured a plot including the house shed septic at the top of the hill. Please email, email me at the address below to let me know you received this mailing. Okay, I'll take care of that. We'll send the documents again by email if I do not hear from you within a week. That's giving a pretty good breakdown of what they're taking out of current use. And road from the Croydon Town Line to the lot. Do you know what this one is?
No, but this was the one that you were asking if it was the one I was talking about. And this is a different one, yeah.
So this is an additional one to the other ones we were
Yep.
Okay. This is gonna have to go to the planning group next.
Yeah, well, they, most of it has to be done by her. I mean, we gotta approve it. We know it's done, but the
She's gonna have to do the taking out of her paperwork, okay.
Christie has taxes and stuff that have to be paid on it because they have to pay the
Well, then I will come down and talk to Christie tomorrow to find out what she needs and then email her the information. Go from there. New Hampshire D E S, Frank Getchel, Weston and Sampson Engineers, Internet, one hundred International Drive, speak one fifty-two, Portsniff. Review for administrative completeness. The New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services has reviewed the preliminary community well siting and large groundwater withdrawal permit application. Preliminary application titled preliminary hydrogeological report and large groundwater withdrawal permit application. Boy, that's a mouthful. Prepared by Weston and Sampson on behalf of the town of Newport dated September two, twenty-twenty-two for administrative completeness. In accordance with the environmental dash W Q four oh three dot team subsection A, a preliminary application is considered administratively complete when all of the materials required by said by another one, environmental W Q four oh three oh six have been submitted to D E S. The purpose of this letter is to notify Weston and Sampson that N A H D E S finds that the above referenced preliminary application submitted is administratively complete. Note that the determination that the preliminary application is complete is not a determination. Preliminary application is approved as submitted. It's basically just saying they've got at this point, RSA forty-five dash C colon twenty-one, section two. Please send a complete copy of preliminary application with a copy of large groundwater permit application notice form via certified mail to each municipality and water supplier in the potential impact area of proposed withdrawal. According to the preliminary application, copies are to be sent just to the town of Croydon. Please provide copies of the return mail receipts as soon as possible. Deadline for a municipality or public water supplier to request a public hearing for this project is fifteen days from the date they receive their copy of preliminary application. So we've got just a couple more days before we can make any response to whether we need a hearing or not. If a public hearing is requested, the Hampshire D E S will inform Weston and Sampson and Town of Newport Public Works Director, Todd Cartier, and coordinate with an entity that requested the hearing to arrange the date, time, and location of the hearing to be held within thirty days. Following the hearing, there will be a forty-five day period which the written comments of the application may be submitted to the Hampshire D E S. If a public hearing is not requested, forty-five day written comment period will commence on the date of receipt of the application. And then the listing of who it all with her. This is the document they sent. What it basically comes down to is this is a complete copy of the preliminary hydrogeological report and large groundwater withdrawal permit application that's been submitted to the town, to the New Hampshire D E S on behalf of the town of Newport. Basically, they want to drill a big well and suck a bunch of water out for the town. However, being close to the Croydon Town Line, as per the Hampshire D E S, the town is required to send you these attached materials that are anticipated as part of the potential result due to the future pumping of the proposed north well may extend northward into the town of Croydon. So who do we want to get involved with this and do you think it's gonna affect us?
How much time do we have time to respond? My biggest fear is people down at that end of the wells going dry.
Right. So it doesn't, is it still on their water property? Address, it just says Corbin Road, tax map and lot number of Town of Newport, so we'd have to go look at that.
On Corbin Road, I bet it's that Hasselat Park that puts that new stuff going in there. Well, no, I don't, you know how the state, how they are.
Let me see if there's a map.
Yeah, no, I, I'd like to hear more about it because of
Then perhaps we should apply for a hearing.
Yeah, because we've got a lot of people down there whose wells could go dry and I want to
Certainly no one that
You know, that if it does, they'll be compensated.
Okay, here's a basic map of Newport and Croydon, this town of Croydon, Town of Newport, Pond, Brook, it looks like. Is that Route ten coming up there? This must be.
It's gotta be below pinnacle. That's where we their pinnacle. That's the airport. That's where it is, it's in Hasselat.
Okay.
It's in that park.
Oh, there's the airport, okay.
Yeah, see, that's that park. Yeah, see, that's that park. Right there. So it is in Hasselat.
So
Or however it's saying.
It's getting close to the Town Line.
Right, it is. I mean, the only thing between us is that little section of
So that would be Camel's Hump Road affected?
Well, I mean
Could be.
Brook runs up here.
Yep.
You know, ten, of course, we got this whole area, but you got toward Brook. I mean, it's gonna affect a lot of theirs till they get to us, but there are a lot of people's wells could be
So then the next thing to do is call for a request for a hearing.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, I will make the call tomorrow to find out exactly how we request the hearing and whether it has to be just a voicemail, email, or what, and then we'll go from there. In the meantime, we need to kinda look this over and try to figure out a little bit more about it.
You wanna study it or?
You wanna study it first? Okay. I will take this much to no, I'll give you that. That was in the book too. This has the information, so I need your contact, so that's what I'll take care of tomorrow. Be interesting to see what that turns out to be. Yeah, I'll take care of that tomorrow. That's gonna be a timely thing because this came in September, it's dated September sixteenth. And fifteen days will be thirty-one, so tomorrow's the twenty-eighth. Okay. All right. Two other things are some driveway permits. One is for creep pavers.
She's telling us they got it. That's the state. On Route ten, they're just telling us they already got it.
Oh, okay.
They gave it to them, to us, that's just our information. Yes, anything on ten comes from the state, the other one's from them too, so it's on one of their roads too.
And Croydon Turnpike is also a state road, so, okay. So both of these just need to be filed with
With the property cards, right.
As you can see, there was a lot of communication in the past two weeks. The new business is the well hearing. Do you have anything else? Do you have anything? Of that, I will open it up for public comments at this point, see what individuals have to say. Yes. If you would, please step up the microphone and state your name so the administrative assistant can make sure minutes, it's already on.
Okay. Hey, everybody. Everybody who's here knows I'm Paul Damon. The one who's been through. So first of all, the most responsible setup here tonight, this is way improved. Thank you very much. It's my pleasure. Hope it continues. So I'm here to just remind everybody of my own state rep, it's all Mr. Gate, which is nine titles, including Croydon. I'll list all this at this moment. And I have info on what I stand for and how I would like to represent you, which I can ask that as well. Independent of that, there was a you remember now, the space cover Google Messenger, there was some threat to concerns about safety when parents and kids are probably going to school. People kind of flying by on Route ten. And I was noticing as I came to leaving tonight, so I so it's thirty-five miles, which is actually a lot for someone. There's no sign for it to be less during those times of day, like a lot of communities have a lower speed limit at certain times. These are not my ideas, this is just what I read today, but I hope it's not the only break it up tonight. People proposed a speed sign, I don't know what signs that tells you how fast you're going, so that you see red, but you can slow down. A crossing guard, some kind of traffic homes that would mark and indicate to people who are used to just follow along, whether they maybe they don't realize there's a school would indicate to slow down and then just get put out at certain times of day. Or different kinds of signs, it's just the speed limit that's linking at certain times of day that highlight attention, where people are trying to speed. But for me, it's me. And lastly, it suggested that we outsource to bring more script field and get their law enforcement people to control all the times of time because all those other pieces might not work if people don't think there's any penalty. Anyway, I respectfully ask the floor to investigate this or designate someone to I don't want anybody to get hurt, and I feel this is a issue that's not actually needed, just service and consent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who puts up yellow signs and
Okay.
Is that D O T?
This has been an ongoing issue for several years. It was going on when Richard Lee was here as police officer. He didn't want the state to do, to contact them for a school zone sign because he said that they would do a traffic survey and if people were speeding, that it could possibly raise the speed limit. No one other than him ever checked on it, the validity of that statement or anything. As far as the crossing guard, that would be something that should be approached with the school itself. The school district should be in charge of a crossing guard. But I would, I will take the time to look into that, to change it again, to see if that is an accurate statement about the traffic survey and everything else. Because I, like I said, it's been at least six, seven years and it's always been laid down, it's a state road. State has legitimacy on the signs and I check and see if that was a valid comment about the traffic survey.
My manager's note, eleven, it's not, it's a state road.
And they have it.
Kids are coming home from school, it is
Right. That's why I don't see why we should have a problem doing it.
So, and there is a reason to.
Right. Yeah, too bad we don't have somebody on the state to work with us on it.
Well, thank you for bringing to our attention and we will look into it. Because I think it's a combination of these things. I think we should probably be checking the D O T to see who puts up that sign. We're gonna have to communicate with the school to find out crossing guard, would it come out of the school budget or to come out of the town? Check with the sheriff's department, see if they can also provide some additional coverage at specific, specific times of the day. We know people who are really zooming through. And then, of course, check with state police as well. So between the two of us, I think we can get some stuff accomplished in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Gentlemen, would you care to make a comment?
Thank you, thank you very much. Walt Staden, Representative for the House, representing South County District Five, and it's Clarion Four Three presently. I am running for reelection for a third term, this time at the new district, South County District Six, Clarion Croydon. Just a couple of news items. On September fifteenth, we had veto day. And all of the eight vetoes of the governor were sustained. But we also had a special rules suspension to pass H P two oh two three by both the House and the Senate, and then subsequently signed by Governor Sullivan. And that is the electric and heating fuel assistance bill, which you mentioned before. Just a couple of facts of that. If you want to avail that or know more about it, just Google New Hampshire Fuel Assistance. And in there, there'll be a lot of detail relative to the C A A's, Community Access Agencies. We'll be listed for each town or zip code where people can apply and have some assistance with the application. It basically is a two hundred dollar electric relief credit on your electric belt, which you qualify. And I think it's about four forty-five or four hundred and fifty dollar credit for your oil, gas, heat, fuel. And that's good for people who can earn more than sixty to seventy-five percent of the average New Hampshire income. Although that's a detail which can be helped by the C A A people. I looked today on the market, crude oil is down from what it was a couple of weeks ago, one oh two. So we can see some of the prices going down for gasoline, not so fast for heating. But we kind of anticipate that there may be a further retreat of the heating oil prices from, you know, the four seventy-nine ice fresh down till I saw a low today in South West New Hampshire, keen at four point oh one nine. Those are dealers with a greatest limitation for delivery. So up here, I guess your closest one may be Newport. And I think I saw six point five nine or four nine on heating, only heating oil. So it's time for people to take attention to that because after the election and the onset of weather, as you anticipated, those fuel prices will go back up. And so when it gets really cold, it will escalate to a hurting level. Now, two oh two three bill is only like a Band-Aid approach, but a Band-Aid is better than nothing. And it at least gives us some time to think about what we can do to counter the energy efficiency that the administration has of our country. We're still gonna look at and work towards other solutions and other answers. On the election front, the Secretary of State has issued a cease and desist order against some folks that are running fraudulent absentee ballot questioners and mailers. And they were putting false addresses or non-legal addresses when they're turning in ballots. So ballots only be returned here to city tower parks or authorized locations. Anyone who was responding to those and sent their absentee ballot. So that ceased and hopefully the people in Clarion Croydon haven't been adversely affected to a great extent. But even one little loss is a tragedy to our metro system. So that was two items I wanted to share with you. I'm running again for my third term, appreciate your support, so I can continue to do the work I already started. In the first few terms of working for New Hampshire. Thank you very much.
Please be learned all about Croydon. And if I can lecture the office, I wanna be able to step away and kind of reveal what everybody knows and what's going on here. And so I hope for everybody to know when you go to the polls. I'm very impressed to help you, Mo. In other cities, I can't believe this left party, what comes before them, what they know. And I don't know why you even stepped in the position of the race. It's like you have a target on your backs. But that, Buzzley, just put a plug in for a set of candidate down, look, they're able to consider him. When you step up, I'll go through him also, thank you.
Thank you. Then I think we want to
Do the close.
A non-public session. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to go into non-public session for the purpose of discussing lawyer-client confidential information for the town of Croydon.
Make a motion and we go to the closed session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're gonna go into closed session and see that, and then coming back out, go to public session. No, that was it. This way, we're doing it so that you don't have to stick around as we're trying to make it as nice to everybody as possible. Yes.
Yeah.
And like you, your university, which your mom, who's your dad, is everyone. That's my daughter, who's well, the mom too, at the university. Oh, no, I didn't mean to get it. But even more important, this whole thing's open for us. I'm just saying, I had a good idea, and I've done a bit of consulting last year going. Because I know that they need people to slow down, it's like on the map. And they can move in different places, but it's not that. What's that?
Parents could have a time to, or write this part. You know, if you're trying to go out there, there's gonna be in the way, the track. You've got a whole space, right? Out in school, right here, well.
That's not right.
It's not.
Why somebody should have the, and then like, they're more someone, they might just do a work that we won't be willing to do it. Well, where all the options are.
But I think it has maybe, maybe, if I town or the school. Having Joe's.
Oh, no.
That's a bad one, that was the best. And that's all. Well, I would, I would, I would.
Do you have nothing else to do, my friend?
Well, I'm actually, I'm, I'm. Here's, if they want a legal position for a school resource officer, so. The validity is pushing my, uh, power position. And consider doing that, I can pay for it, I'm ready. For the most part.
Well, so I suppose that's a little bit here, the public park. Girls spend half the day, continue to pretend for five hours, come back. But still, there's a huge kind of customer.
Which is, I mean. And you think that there's never, there's no chance of an altercation or not about that. I'm doing instructions, I'm doing your instructions, I don't understand. You know, for, for, for. Get back. I mean, I don't know, I'm talking about with the parent authorities. Don't, don't give me the start, don't do that to me.
Oh, and how can you be those folks who sit there. Outside, because talk about long day, sitting there. But since you are the person who, that, that you, that's your job.
Yeah, and I don't think they're gonna be.
I'll come back, it's better. A lot. Okay, I. See, I'll say.
Well, do.
So can I ask you, can you know something? Since you.
And as the rule says, the next step is to re-open public session. So I entertain a motion to go back into public.
Your turn.
I name motion to re-enter public session.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. As far as the selling of the properties, I have not heard back from the guy down in Massachusetts. He still has needs, he give us some information so I can gift him the lawyer to do the paperwork. But Scott Drew has got everything filled out or sent to me, and I've got the stuff from the lawyer. So I'll contact him so that we can figure out when we can get together to do a closing.
Then you have to make an appointment with our notary.
Right.
He said we have to make an appointment with our notary.
Well, I was wondering, we just want to put it on the schedule for the next meeting.
Sure, I plan to bring it every, every meeting.
Because then, you know, all of us will be here, it's a warned meeting, so they can't accuse us of having a meeting separately.
Right.
And we can get it all taken care of for that, and at least get that piece of property taken care of. I have to contact D R A and find out about a couple of forms that the lawyer told me I need to fill out, but I believe those are on portal. So I'm gonna go getting some questions from Jamie on which ones and where to go to deal with the stuff. So that'll be the last step after we actually get a piece of property, or pieces of property sold. Is there anything else to come before the board tonight? Pretty good shape.
Motion, adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Leading adjourned.
Aye.
Five.
Nice.
I'm down there for a two-hour session on strategic planning for the next five years for the session.
What do you do, do you do the three oh eight or?
I reload for thirty. Thirty, I think I've actually got three, I'm not sure if I got three oh eight guys or not.
Okay.
Somebody might give me one to brag. Okay. This said.
Did we adjourn?
You did.
We returned and adjourned. And just a quick note, I sent you guys a thing from the Civic Plus about the training. I send that for tomorrow, so find out more about how soon we can get the Civic Plus website up and running for the town. So by the next meeting, we should have the positive information, which would be nice.